Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call. We're missing somebody. Well, I would like to call the October ninth, 2023 Hilliard City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Ms. Hale will give the invocation and then Vice President, well Vermillion, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I hope she shows her. There she is, sorry. Yeah. Will the clerk please call? The roll.
Jumped you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you usually do the invocation, the pledge, and then the roll call.
Right, okay, sorry. Just jumping all over the place. So let's go ahead and start, go ahead.
All right, dear God, thank you for this country, thank you for the state of Ohio and for Hilliard, thank you for the privilege, Lord, to serve our city on council and thank you for the residents here that live here and work here and thrive here. God, we know that you're the Lord of all the nations and you're the Prince of peace. Tonight, we pray for the people of Israel and Gaza. We know that you know those lands very well. We pray with all of our hearts for those grieving, the loss of loved ones, those who've been captured and those whose homes have been destroyed. We pray for de-escalation of this conflict. Lord, violence is provoking violence and we pray for reason to prevail. Help the other nations that have a vested interest in escalating this crisis be restrained. And, Lord, we just pray for active and effective peacemaking at an international political level. I love you, I thank you for just the freedoms that we have here in America. We pray for your protections in Jesus' name, amen.
Now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Carrier. Ms. Cottone.
Here.
Ms. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Marsh.
Here.
Mr. Teeter.
Here.
Vice President Vermillion.
Here.
President Tarazi.
Here.
Council has copies of the September twenty-fifth, 2023 Special Executive Session and Regular Meeting Minutes and the October second, 2023 Special Executive Session Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, hearing none, those minutes stand approved. We will go into the Commission and Board reports. Board of Zoning Appeals, Peggy Hale.
We'll be meeting in two weeks.
Destination Hilliard, Cynthia Vermillion.
Some Halloween events coming up this month. Check out destinationhilliard.org.
Environmental Sustainability Commission, Pete Marsh.
Meeting on Wednesday.
Morpsy, City Manager Crandall.
No update, thank you.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Peggy Hale.
We meet this week.
Public Arts Commission, no report. Reckon Park Advisory Commission. Turn on your microphone.
No report.
Now, now we heard you, okay. Shade Tree Commission, Andy Teeter.
No report.
Aging in Place Committee, Tina Cottone.
We meet tomorrow.
Okay. We have two proclamations tonight. Let me go ahead. We'll. So we start with Mindy Atwood. You can come on up.
Who's that?
Who's that? All right. Let me go ahead and read it. This is Make a Difference Month. Or Make a Difference Month is celebrated each year during the month of October. This year, Make a Difference Day falls on October twenty-eighth and whereas the month is the largest community service effort in the nation, a celebration of neighbors helping neighbors. Whereas, Patches of Light has long played a significant role in the Hilliard Committee assisting families with critical and terminally ill children so that they can remain together during their hospitalizations and treatment. And whereas, the Hilliard-based organization exemplifies the belief that connecting with others and working together through volunteer service can bridge the differences that separate people and help solve serious social problems. And whereas, the City of Hilliard encourages citizens to support and volunteer in organizations such as Patches of Light and to otherwise participate in volunteer projects as we work together to meet the needs of our neighbors to, quote, "make a difference." Not only during the month of October, but throughout the year by extending a helping hand to those in need. Now, therefore, I, Omar Tarazi, President of City Council, on behalf of City Council proclaim the month of October, 2023, as Make a Difference Month and thank you very much for all the work that you do.
Yeah, they can't hear you online, Mindy.
Yes, Patches of Light, I just want to invite everybody to come and join us and we have a couple of things this year that we're going to be doing, but this is our twenty-fourth year of the Hilliard in October, Make a Difference Month. So if it wasn't for the fact that the community came together and worked together, we wouldn't still be coming back and saying, can we do it again another year? So, thank you, thank you so much, thank you to all of you.
Now, this is a crew here, buddy. What a, what a crew. Get in there, Omar. Yeah, right.
And then the second proclamation is. Is Hindu Heritage Awareness Month. So, sorry. Hinduism is the third-largest religion in the world with more than one billion followers worldwide and four million in the United States. And whereas, during the month of October, the culture, history, traditions, achievements, and contributions of Hindus are recognized and celebrated throughout the United States. And whereas, the American Hindus have made numerous positive contributions in all aspects of society from science to business to politics to spirituality. And whereas, the Hilliard's vibrant American Hindu community has contributed tremendously to the vitality of the city, enriched the lives of its citizens. And whereas, during October, the American Hindu community will collectively celebrate its heritage by focusing on its culture and the diverse spiritual traditions rooted in India. And now, therefore, I, Omar Tarazi, President of City Council, on behalf of Hilliard City Council and the City of Hilliard, do hereby proclaim the month of October, 2023, as Hindu Heritage Month. And, yes, thanks for coming. Can you please introduce yourselves at the microphone?
This is Aditya Gupta, representing a number of Hindu organizations. We requested this proclamation. Thank you for proclaiming this month as the Hindu Heritage Awareness Month, representing the Hindu community here. We appreciate your efforts and thank the council and the members.
Thank you very much.
Photo bombing. You were photo bombing. I wasn't, I was out there, but you were.
All right. So now we move on to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? None. There's one, excuse me, on the item on the consent agenda this evening, which is a transfer of ownership, D five and D six liquid permit for the liquor permit, sorry, for the property located at four four five three Cemetery Road. Currently, Lewis Grill Fusion Restaurant. No objections were received. Would anyone like this item to be moved to the regular agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and second to approve the consent agenda item by voice vote. So, motion and second.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, it has been approved. This is the public portion of the meeting, is there anybody signed up for the public portion?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to the business of council. We have one second reading, public hearing this evening. Will the clerk please read twenty-three dash seventeen by title only?
Amending and updating certain sections of Section one 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 five of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City's Codified Ordinances.
Has anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
No, sure.
Okay. Does council, is there anything further to be said on this particular topic for?
I think there's some general discussion that happened at the last meeting and to continue that, there were in the packet were some of the changes that were either talked about at the last meeting or I believe we had one council member forward some additional thoughts that are incorporated.
Okay. If there's no further questions or comments, or did I miss anybody?
We talked about. Are we able to pull up the changes where it talks about the?
Uses?
The, yeah, like the duplexes and triplexes and quadplexes.
Yeah, maybe this is a good time for me to jump in here.
Yeah.
We were looking at this this afternoon, kind of taking a fresh look at it and we think it's probably more productive to remove any of that language under six A about, because this is about the number of dwelling units is the topic. And say, for a list of permitted and conditional uses, see one 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 five point zero two, which is this chart which has the conservation, it would have been amended anyway to show what uses are allowed. And then we can go through that because like the term duplex, we don't use, triplex isn't used, but there's different terminology. So we were thinking that probably would be the easier way to go, if that makes sense to all of you.
Okay. And I don't think the intent was to necessarily make everything one story with those. I think the intent was to not have them horizontally stacked, whereas they could be more than one story above vertically compressed, if that makes sense.
Yeah, you're meaning, so you're meaning the apartments can't be on top of each other, but they can be two or three floors?
Well, no apartments, but the living dwelling units could be next to each other, but not on top of each other. Is that kind of the nature of what was intended?
Yeah, Phil, is that, is that chart able to be pulled up here?
That's a good question. Dee, would you be able to do that?
See if I can.
I can give you what I have because I've got to apologize because this was right before we were coming in.
It sounds like it makes more sense rather than trying to work the language.
Yeah, and I can go through each one, there's not that many.
Is that in the current code?
Yeah. It's one 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 five point zero two. And the third one, yeah, if you can pull that up, that'd be great. Apologize, Dee, I should have talked to you earlier.
Very interactive.
One one one.
Dee, is he going to pull up here?
Schedule of uses, number, the second one. Second one.
Yeah. There you go.
There we go. So if you see the HCD, those are the uses that are currently approved, either as conditional or permitted, that's what the C and P are for. And this is the terminology that's used throughout our code, so it makes it a little more, well, it's more consistent to use these terms. As you can see, the first one is just the detached single family, that's permitted use. The next, where it says dwelling attached single family, that would be like a duplex and fits into that category. So we could either keep that as a conditional use or make it a permitted use. You have dwelling multifamily, currently it's a conditional use. If you wanted to remove it as a use, we could just take that out. And then dwelling two-family, which is also a little different than the attached, but it would also be either a permitted use, conditional use. The other one here that dwelling units on the upper floors of building with non-residential uses on the street level, I think you guys wanted that as probably a permitted use if you were going to have a mixed use. So you might have apartments above any, any commercial and that, that's something to discuss as well. So those are really the categories to, to focus on, if that helps.
Okay, thanks, Phil. So I guess if we take them one at a time, the, well, the detached single family would stay as is, but the attached single family, so that is where, like a fourplex would be considered that, is that correct?
That's detached?
Dwelling's attached, single family.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, right?
Okay. So if I am accurately grasping the intent of everything we talked about last meeting, what we would want to do is consider making that a permitted use while taking then the category below it and just taking that out as a use. Does that sound correct to everyone else?
Do we need to specify that there would not be an attached home horizontally attached to another one, or does this just imply that there can only be adjacent attachments?
Yeah, what you're saying is eliminating the top, we.
Right, because we put in no apartments already was.
Yeah, we would probably need to further define that in here and we can do that, maybe get a separate category then since you want to, they can be done horizontally, not vertically.
Opposite. They can't be done stacked on top of each other horizontally.
Yeah, not vertical. Oh, you want it to be.
We, like, if they were like fourplex, so they could be adjacent to each other, but they can't be on top of each other.
We need to speak into the mics because I can barely hear you.
Oh. I think the intent was that the units could be adjacent to each other, but not stacked horizontally on top of each other because that falls more into the apartment category with the walk-ups and things like that.
Vertically, that's why people are getting confused, you're not stacked vertically.
Oh, I'm thinking of the, how the floor plane goes, the floor planes are horizontal, but however you want to call them, horizontal, vertical.
Yeah, that's where I was getting confused because I was just thinking you don't want a unit on top of the other.
Correct, however you word it.
Say it that way instead of. No multi-units. No stacking of multi-units, how about that? We can make that a additional category because I think it further defines that because that is not part of the definition currently.
So that's not part of the definition of attached, single family?
I, I don't believe it is. I think it needs to be clarified for this purpose, yeah.
Okay.
Did, John or you?
I don't know if John's volunteering to.
He is, he's.
I'd like to, because he knows the code a lot better than I do.
And I guess if they're looking into this, does everyone else kind of agree that that was kind of the, what was implied on the last ones?
Just as long as you don't consider.
Need your wisdom, John, here on this.
Oh, then we're in trouble. Good evening, Members of Council. So, just in general, the, the term attached, single-family residence describes a single-family residence that is built to the edge of the lot line next to another similar, single-family residence on the edge of its lot, such that the two buildings are touching along an exterior wall. It differs from a townhouse in that each building is separate in and of itself and could remain structurally even if the other were torn down. The two lots and homes together are often referred to as a duet. So, these terms, I think, are just to cover any of those possibilities where townhouse, sometimes townhouses are referred to as attached, single-family, especially if they are sold separately and they have lot lines. Sometimes it's a, it's an apartment-type building where they're, each unit is part of one property and they're rented out, as opposed to when they each have a, they're on their own separate parcel. So, there's some probably mixing of those terms depending on the, the house type, but.
But it sounds like the way it's currently defined, we would be fine because it's basically duplex, putting a permitted use there instead of.
Yeah, what I'm hearing from that definition, the sharing of an exterior wall.
Yeah.
If that's a permitted use, that would allow for those, those structures.
Yeah, and a duplex is usually on one lot, two dwellings on one parcel, and the attached would be separate parcels typically, but.
Yeah, when I was looking at this this afternoon, it, it's good to have you up here because the other one that I was, what's the difference between the attached, single-family and dwellings, two-family?
Uh, because I think the dwellings, two-family would be that what we often call the duplex, where the two-family dwellings are on a single lot.
Okay.
As opposed to the attached, single-family are usually on separate lots with the common wall and that, yeah, so it's usually a.
So they're both duplexes.
Ownership, if they look similar, you wouldn't be able to tell them normally.
Okay.
When you look at them from the street, but it's a separate ownership means, yeah.
So I think.
That would be permitted as well, then?
I think what we want, if I'm understanding correctly, we want to make dwellings, attached, single-family permitted, dwellings, multiple-family removed, and dwellings, two-family permitted.
Yep. I think that covers it. And then I was going to put a reference in the section instead of the sentence we had, just see this section.
Yeah.
So then you'll have that. And I would prefer, if you guys approve this tonight, I, I would prefer to have the option to come back and put this all together because this was, you know, we just want to make sure it all syncs together in the code. And when we were going through it, we were finding stuff that was kind of getting inconsistent that we wanted to make sure we had, so. I want to get you guys this close to finale.
Yeah.
On this tonight.
So what I'll put a motion on the floor for is to make dwellings, attached, single-family a permitted use, to remove as a use dwellings, multiple-family, and to make two-family dwellings a permitted use. And then the addition of Phil's sentence pointing to this chart as what are uses for this district.
Yeah, and that would be under six, capital A, and it would be the last sentence, it would say, for a list of permitted and conditional uses, see Section one 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 five point zero two.
Would it be beneficial, oh, go ahead.
So, are, so we're not going to consider the next one after two-family that says dwelling units on upper floors with non-residential use, like, like the mixed use? Or is that going to get thrown into the?
I feel like that goes into the commercial piece. Is that true?
What do you mean it goes, I'm sorry, what do you mean it goes into the, I was going to ask the same question.
When, so this is, this proposed legislation is for residential development. At some stage of development, there's commercial, Hilliard Conservation District Commercial Zoning Code, that's not ready to come forward, but that is where I think that would come into play, is the question about dwelling units on upper floors where non-residential use is on street level.
But Pete, this is in the residential section and right below it is the commercial section, so it's, it's under the residential section.
But it's not, it's, it's not a use currently, and so we're not adding or subtracting a use at this point, but we could, when we come back eventually with some sort of commercial zoning for Hilliard Conservation District, it could be discussed at that time whether that wanted to be added. But at this time, it's not an add or subtract.
Phil, I didn't understand the one sentence about that, are we ready, like you said that there was inconsistencies you wanted to say?
No, this would have been an inconsistency if we put that sentence in, that's why we just want to go back in whatever the changes are because like, you know, we're operating on the fly. The legal department would like to go back and have a chance to just make sure it's consistent. If there are additional changes that result in what's passed, we can make it all consistent, if that makes sense. Because if we would have passed the language that we had had in here, it would have conflicted them with this chart, which would have been, you know, obviously an issue. So, it's just so we have the ability, you know, because we have, we're not getting, I don't know exactly what council's going to decide tonight, so it's kind of hard to guess and see if there's inconsistencies. We'd just like to have that opportunity.
I guess I'm, what I'm wondering is, is if you believe as law department you need an extra, you know, meeting to digest it, make sure all the language is perfectly synced, why would we vote on it before that?
I said, I, I mean, I would be happy if you would, I'd like to get it to a final position tonight and then wait for a vote next week till we.
Oh, so basically get everybody consented and then.
Yeah, that's what, that's kind of what we're, yeah, we were hoping to get tonight. I just want to come to some finality though, so we're not operating, you know, editing our code on the fly.
Okay. All right, I think that's clear, at least in my mind, yes.
Yeah, apologize, that was confusing.
So for the dwellings, attached, single-family, would we want to put in parentheses up to four units? Or would we want to just keep it at the maximum two?
I don't know that that's a necessary thing to add, it might complicate the other zoning districts that are listed in here.
I think it would require like a second line, that we would just have the dwellings, attached, single-family with a permitted use, or dwellings, attached, single-family up to four units, make it its own line, and then just put permitted.
I mean, you can always leave it also as a conditional use and then if somebody came back with ten that were connected, they would have to get that approved.
Oh, so they, so it would be conditional any more than two, so two would be allowed and then any more would still be a conditional?
I think you're taking anything beyond that away, right? We're talking about the multifamily, would it be removed in total?
Yeah, I, I think attached, single-family, as John said, that could be two separate lots with two that share an exterior wall, it could be three, it could be four.
I didn't get that impression, I got the impression that it was only two, it can be more?
Yeah, I, based on the normal definition, I would think it, it could be more than that.
Okay.
It's not limited to two.
Let's take for example Truman Club where there's several units attached, I don't know how many here in those, but four per, Truman, yeah, sorry, Truman. Yeah, so there's like four of those, would those be considered attached or attached, single-family?
I'm not sure if they're atta, it has to do with the, I'm not sure if they're attached, single-family or whether they're just multifamily because I don't know that, we didn't distinguish, it wasn't distinguished when those came through, it was just, these are the, the multi-unit buildings that came through. I think if you.
But they're all different parcels.
I'm not, I'm not sure on that one.
Yeah, they're all different ownerships.
And some, there are some that are condominiumized and there are some that are, that are not, so I think, yeah, there are different products over there, but I don't know that they meet, I don't know if they, the definition that I read about attached, single-family, I don't know if they meet that. I don't know if you took down one unit, would the other ones be able to remain standing, as opposed to having the common wall, they're just on each side of a common wall that they're both part of. So that's the distinction on attached, single-family versus a multifamily structure. But this looks like.
But, but I think the intent is to allow those type of structures, right?
Correct, correct.
So.
You may want to, you may want to put a maximum number then, just, because I guess how do you distinguish multifamily from attached, single-family?
Well, I like the distinguishment of different ownership, different parcels, different ownership, because then that takes away apartments, rental units, and that type of stuff.
Oh, gotcha. So, as long as they're on, as long as they're each a separate parcel,
That makes me...
You're good with that? Is that kind of way the group is going?
And that would take away duplexes, then, because the duplex would be two on one lot. But I like what you're saying about make them each their own, but how does council feel?
Well, the two families allowed is a separate line item up there.
That's, yeah, the dwelling, two-family.
But yeah, so if you, if you, if you go that way, that's easy to administer and distinguish in terms of that.
New definitions, then?
No, I thought that's how it was defined.
I don't think, I think, I think the common definition for attached, single-family requires them to be on a separate parcel, and multi-family does not, I mean, multi, well, if you had a multi-family building that was, I mean, you can have a high-rise condominium that has all different...
We can.
It's just a, it's just method of ownership, so you just...
Well...
Were you finished with your thought?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
So, that brings back this question of commercial use. You could do all this in residential sections, and then a commercial have coffee shop on the bottom, and then go ahead and put multi-family on the top, correct, with the definitions?
Uh, not the way that reads. That doesn't allow dwelling units on upper floors.
We don't have any commercial, I think, in the plan for the Derby at this point.
The Derby? We have none.
Yeah, the current...
But if, if you allow, if you were to put dwelling units on upper floors of buildings with non-residential uses on street level, if you made that a permitted or conditional use, then yes, you would, that would, that would then be allowed. So, it's, it's not, it's not on there.
And he's not adding it in.
Yeah, so that's, that's not currently permitted, so that, there's safety in that one, just leaving it like it is.
Yeah.
How do you stop, how do you stop the high-rise condos?
Well, one person at a time.
I like, I like putting conditional use on all the multi-family. Well, but that just puts it through P and Z, that doesn't get it back to council, right?
No, it does. Conditional use has come back to council currently.
Right? You guys had changed that, I think, a couple years back.
You'd probably want to have some standard for approving or not approving the conditional use. If you just have it as a conditional use, they just meet the conditional use standards of the code. If you, if you put additional conditions for that type of use, but you also have the latitude on a multi-family proposal that they got to give you parkland, or you can rec, you can take a fee in lieu of parkland dedication, if you want, but, but the council controls that. If the applicant says, no, we're going to give you a fee in lieu of land dedication, you can say, give us the land, and that...
But the current problem with that is they could give you land out by the creek.
You don't have to accept the land. You can, you can accept the land that, that you want. Hey, that land is not suitable for, as a residential, or as a recreational land for, for these units. We don't find that consistent with what our code is intending, which is to provide recreational opportunities for the residents, and they would have to meet that standard, and you can hold them to it. But if you, I mean, you, if you want to specify some things, that's probably not that hard. The easiest thing is, if you don't want them, is just to not allow them.
Let, let me make a suggestion here and get your feedback on it, that I think is the simpler solution to this. Dee, can you scroll it just a bit up? Yeah. Leave the attached, single-family conditional, if you want, over in the specific conditions where we have maximum 20% allowable in the HCD district, if you wanted, this is a place where you could put maximum of, of four, four units. Just remove the conditional from multiple-family and leave the conditional for two-family.
I like that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, that sounded like what the, kind of the consensus was leaning towards, is you wanted to allow some of those one-story, the old pinwheel style, where you had four patio-type homes. If you put a limit on that number, then you don't have to worry about the larger building having more than that unit.
Are you good with that, Phil?
Yeah, that makes sense.
But I think it doesn't have to be limited to one story, if it wanted like a patio home with a loft or something that mattered.
Correct, correct. No, but if you...
You just can't be on top of each other.
Yeah, you're not, right, you're not stacking multiple stories of units.
Can you speak at all to the economic viability? Because if everybody, if there seems to be consensus that they want patio homes, or they want these sort of subdivided things, is that economically viable if we're also simultaneously requiring so much outside of green space and everything else? Or, you know, does the numbers work, I guess, for that?
Are you asking me if it's...
Yeah, does the numbers work?
All I know is people keep asking, how can we develop that land out there that, that is, that there's no sewer for, and if they're not high densities?
So, in your, I mean, in your perspective...
Can you develop it? Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Is it economically viable? Yeah, you can theoretically develop anything. The question is, is it economic, if it's not economically viable, then it'll just sit there and never be developed. So, the question is, is if we are saying that we don't want high-density apartments, and we want this other thing, but we simultaneously want all this green space, we want all these other things, does that all work? Does that, does that, you know, economically work, to your knowledge?
Well, yeah, we have developments out there that are...
We're increasing the standard.
That are being built.
We're increasing the amount of green space. Is that still going to work with that?
There are patio homes in my neighborhood that are half the square footage, that they've paid the same price as a standalone home. They're a popular product.
Oh, yeah. So, here's the thing, the more open space you get, for the same number of lots, the smaller the lots are. So, that's attractive to a certain buyer. It's, it's a smaller lot, and you get less stuff you have to take care of. The, there are, we get calls all the time about land that's out in the Derby area, hey, can we, how can we develop this? Well, a lot of it's not in our contract boundary, you know, for water and sewer. Some is, but right now with the, with the cap on the sewer, we're just talking. You know, there's no, there's no plan. But based on the conversations we're having, people think that they can develop it and sell. There's no, there's no, there's no shortage of people who want to build houses. And I don't think that, whether it's 50% open space or 70% open space, they'll find a way to do it. It's the right product, the right product will sell.
Can I first remove my previous motion?
Yeah, let's start.
Let's build our foundation again.
Yeah, let's do a new motion, so everybody's on board.
Yeah.
Would you mind turning on your microphone?
So, with the P after dwellings detached, single-family, does that mean that a development of detached, single-family homes does not come to council for approval out in the Derby?
Oh, I'm sorry, if, if there's, if it's permitted, then yes, it would not come, well, it would not come to council for the, well...
It's rezoned.
It would come for the rezoning, but after, after the land is rezoned, and then they just want to plat, the plat, well, the plat would come for an acceptance of things, but...
But there's not a whole lot you can do.
You would not get it for, for building permits, for example. If, if all they had to do was apply for building permits, it would not come to council.
I, I guess my concern would be for all of the issues of opens, open space and stormwater management and all that. Would we be able to see that come to council?
That's all in the zoning.
In the zoning, and then they would have to meet, they got to meet the state requirements. They, they have, that has to be shown in their plans and calculations, or they don't get approval to do it.
Because this is still RR1, right?
It's, well, current, the zoning on it now, you mean, before it comes, before it gets annexed? Or if it's, if it's annexed, it's assigned, usually out there would be the R1, or sorry, the RR zoning district, the rural residential. And then that would have to be rezoned to do any significant development.
You get to see it all, but when it comes.
So, the rezoning to the HCD would come to planning commission and council, and that were all the, well, it goes to the Derby Accord Panel for recommendation, then it goes to planning commission, then it comes to council on their zoning.
You mean the developers wouldn't be able to do whatever they want?
Unless you said they could.
Thank you.
Okay. To clean up this particular section, let me make a new motion to strike the conditional use for multiple-family dwellings, and to add a specific condition to the attached, single-family dwellings that states no more than four, four units attached, or however you use that terminology.
And no vertical.
I think that's already implied by the exterior wall.
Yep.
That's my new motion.
Second that.
We have a motion and second. Any comments on said motion? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
S70.
Is there any further conversation?
Yes, there were two other topics that we talked about. I'm going to do the easy one first. There was concern regarding the exceptions and a desire to add just a minor tweak to make that language read, "Political subdivisions are not obligated to comply with the open space standards, but should make all efforts to do so when feasible, and shall also comply with all other requirements of this code section." So, it's just adding the, "Should make all efforts to do so when feasible." That was requested at the last meeting, and so I would move to amend Section G to include that language.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Sorry, I didn't follow.
Oh, you moved.
You're telling, should...
So, second.
First and second, okay. So, on this new motion, to amend that other, other political subdivision should versus...
"Should make all efforts to do so when feasible" is the additional language.
So, our zoning code is going to say that, like, Brown Township should, or somebody at another political...
It's saying that if a school were to be built out there, they would not have to have 70% open space, but they should make the effort to do so, and that all other requirements within the code, they would be obligated to follow.
Yeah, the, I think the language in the packet's a little different, but that's, it's fine. It's the same concept. Pardon?
Are you okay with the language?
Yeah, under G, the language that was put together was, "Political subdivisions are not obligated to comply, but are encouraged to make a good faith effort with the open space standards. Political subdivisions shall comply with all other requirements of this section." So, it was related specifically to the open spaces. That's how we recalled it when we were putting it together.
Okay.
But I just wanted to get it out there, because I know it was a little different.
Yeah. If you think there's a, if that version is clearer in your mind...
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
All right, well, then I'll withdraw that motion, and I will move to accept the language that Phil stated.
Hold on, isn't that already part of the language?
It's in packet, but it's new.
It's, it's new.
Was it one of the changes that Pete had previously?
It's not what we already had amended last meeting.
On page five of five, or seven of seven.
Okay, so motion and second. Somebody?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion on taking the language that Phil recommended? Seeing none, will there be a roll call, please?
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Tarazi? Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
S70.
Then the last topic that was brought up at the last meeting for discussion had to do with two things, the, the development rights of land outside of our boundary, and how much open space would be required within the development itself. Can you pull that up, Dee, please?
What is it? What page is it in?
Page four.
Page four, five.
Open space cal...
It's E5B, right?
So, there were, again, there were two things here. In Section E, there was that discussion surrounding the, what number would be used for figuring out available ERUs, and then the separate question, but kind of tied into it that was brought up was if the council was interested in putting a minimum percentage of open space that has to be part of the development itself, as opposed to off-site.
I think this is a good topic, a discussion. I think it was brought up last week, you know, concern that if we have all the open space off-site, then the residents that live in those new developments aren't going to have the benefit of the green space that the Derby, you know, that we're trying to protect in the Derby Accord. So, I definitely feel that we need to have some of the green space located within the development, and I do not think that we should be able to, you know, push all that green space relocated, I guess. But what do you guys think?
Well, I just, I, I'm not sure, we talked about how to calculate that, and I don't really know.
Well, I have a comment. I don't understand that, that why you think that the green space has to be in your backyard or adjacent to your property. I mean, it could be walkable or drivable by a bicycle to get there. It doesn't have to be owned by the homeowner. That's, I've been confused about this whole, I know it's not owned, but it doesn't have to be right there so you can see it. It has to be reasonably available so you can get to it, and that other people can get to it.
I think there could be a compromise, because I definitely think that the green belt that Brown Township and the city have in mind, I think that's an amazing idea, and we should support that as much as we can. But I do feel, too, that we owe it to the residents to kind of protect the developments out there, so that they can benefit from the green space, because these developers are going to be building on 30%, so they're losing a lot of value that they could be building if we gave them permission to build on 70%. So, these homes are going to be more expensive, just because of the ratio of what they have to work with, and then we're going to take all their green space and put it elsewhere. I don't think that that's fair.
From a staff standpoint, we'd like to see this remain as is, and to evaluate each project on a case-by-case basis to see what makes sense. You could have a development come in that's adjacent, immediately adjacent to a large, open space that they have availability to, but they, you know, a lot of the land related to their development for open space could be part of the green belt. So, I think there's different scenarios that we could look at and decide, does, does this one look right? Does it have enough open space adjacent to or on-site to get at that conservation, design idea? So, I would, I would leave it as...
Can I ask John a question? Because you alluded to the... Can I ask John a question, because you alluded to this earlier, with the open space, like, not having to accept certain open space? Is simply the excess or lack of open space in a, is that a thing that a council member could use when evaluating? So like, could a council member say, you know, "I feel like this proposed development should have opens, more open space close to these homes," and would that be a valid evaluation tool?
I think you could. I think, I think you have some subjectivity associated with the parkland, and then five E where it says "to further the concept of a green belt around the west." Hey, I don't think that furthers the concept of the green belt. Could be the answer. Or I think, hey, I think that does help further the concept of the green belt. And then in conjunction with that, hey, our provision of parkland, the provisions for that in the code are supposed to be to provide recreational opportunities for residents. I don't think you're doing that enough closer to these homes. I'm not voting for that. I mean, I, those are, those are parts where you see how, does it, does it meet the intent of our code, or, or doesn't it? And I think there's, the way you read that and the way you read a plan, each of us could, could review a plan and come with different ideas on, does it meet both of those cases, and could make our decisions that way? I, I think that's something that can be defensible, because it's, it's written that, you have latitude in what, and how you, uh, how you view that the proposal matches up with certain code provisions. Setback's real easy. Does it meet the setback, or doesn't it? Do you meet the parkland provisions, where it talks about providing meaningful and reasonable, and, you know, those types of things for recreational opportunities, providing ten acres per thousand population? Are you, are you doing those things? Is it usable parkland? Now, you're giving us the leftover that you can't build on. I'm not accepting that. I mean, those are conversations that we have with developers sometimes.
Okay.
And I think because the language reads "may be permitted," it doesn't say "will be permitted," um, "may" is conditional upon approval, right?
Yeah, and, I mean, if you wanted to, I don't know if there's language that you add to that that gives you more, uh, ability to say yes or no.
I, I like, you helped me when you first explained that, the, the very first part of that sentence, "to further the concept of a green belt," that does kind of, um, is specific about how we're gonna allow open space. It's not contiguous. It's gotta help the green belt that we've all talked about, and I think we're all pretty much in favor of.
I'm gonna throw out a suggestion that will, what I'm gonna propose is not, not putting in a minimum amount, but possibly changing this sentence to say, "to further the concert, concept of a green belt around the western side of Hilliard and recreational opportunities for residents." That way, if one, two, seven council members want to use that as an evaluation tool, it is there to say, "Hey, you put all seventy acres off-site. I don't think that furthers recreational opportunities for residents," and, and gives you a, a leg to stand on to try to get some of that insight without putting a strict limit in here that might, you know, hurt flexibility for how, how proposals are put forth. Does, do you feel like that accomplishes, or not?
That adds anything than what's already here. I mean, basically, you're saying, hey, we, I mean, they're telling us, the law department, everybody's saying, "We want, this is flexibility." And adding additional language to provide for flexibility, sounds like we already have it in this language.
No, now I'm proposing flexibility for council members in their evaluation tools. So we're leaving the flexibility of not having a fifty percent, thirty percent, whatever requirement, but we're adding a clause in there that says recreational opportunities for residents that allows a council member to have something to say to a proposed developer who, who maybe brings something that they feel like doesn't incorporate enough open space in the development.
If I got you correctly, to further the concept of a green belt and recreational opportunities around the western open space that is not, that, that, I, that?
Yes.
Okay, fine. So that's a motion.
Well, I haven't made it a motion yet. I'm presenting it as a question to see if that addresses the concern without having to put any percentages on this.
I'm okay with that.
I, I have a question. Is a green belt not, I thought the intention of a green belt was a contiguous space, not pieces here and there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Would all of these come to council then, as far as whenever they want to have something that's non-contiguous? They would all come to council?
Yeah, it would still be, just like any zoning proposal would come to us, and an example, extreme scenario of thirty acres that's all built on, and they say we wanted to put the seventy acres somewhere else. Um, I think what I've suggested gives you the opportunity to say, "Hey, I think some of that needs to be within it." It doesn't require you to do that, but it gives you the opportunity to say, "In this case, I think it needs to be in there," or you could say, "Well, that development that was next door has, you know, fifty acres right next to you, so we're good with it the way you've presented it." Because I think that's what John was getting at, that maybe somebody's donated a whole bunch of parkland already that's immediately adjacent to this.
And it doesn't have to be the-
And in that case, you're gonna say, "You have to put more parkland in that," which isn't necessarily beneficial.
And that could be like the, you know, potential Metro Park area, it could be the potential green belt, it could be a potential, anything like that. I'm okay with that.
Okay. So do you, are we amending? Do you want a motion or not?
So now I am going to move to add the language in Section E to read, "To further the concept of a green belt around the western side of Hilliard and recreational opportunities for residents," and then the rest says as-is.
Okay. Any second?
Second.
All right, motioned and seconded. Any comments on this motion? Roll call, please.
Well, wait, before you do that. So, I'm sorry, I'm still stuck on the contiguous. So we're saying we're not going to have a contiguous green belt, or we're going to have a partially contiguous green belt that can be, I don't know, done differently if you don't, if you want to keep it to yourself. I'm, I'm just confused about what that is happening.
This is, um, this is just the evaluation criteria for council members. As, as John said, this is subjective. You know, there could be one or two council members who say, "Hey, there needs to be more in here," or there could be one or two that say, "No, it doesn't," you know. Um, but it gives, it basically makes there be two ways you can evaluate that open space. One is the green belt, which should be a contiguous or mostly contiguous piece of land. Um, that's most beneficial from the, the wildlife side of things. Um, but it also allows for the opportunity in some sort of extreme scenario where you feel like there just needs to be some green space amenity within the development itself. You can, you can coax the developer into that.
And, you know what, I think like the green space, or the green belt is a little bit theoretical. Correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, we don't have it, because it depends on if people are willing to sell it. So as they're willing to sell, I would imagine, you know, in this theoretical plane, it might not immediately be contiguous, but as we can, we'll purchase it. Is that right?
And the green belt will also be something that kind of develops over time. As you get pieces, and then you start, you know, once the pieces start falling into place, then, then you're starting to say, "This is more important that that be dedicated to, to complete it."
That's what I understand.
Okay, so there's a, can you turn on your microphone when you're talking, though?
I said I understand, I just don't like it.
All right, for the record, she does not like it. But, can anybody else that wants to vote? I mean, before we vote? All right, so roll call on the motion.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
No.
Vice President Vermilion?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Pass five two.
Okay.
All right, the, the last piece that's still outstanding. Oh, sorry.
One, one second, I-
Okay.
One, one second. I, I skipped, you had a comment before. All right, well then, go ahead.
All right, the last thing that I can remember that, that we talked about last meeting that wasn't resolved, with the objective, as Phil said, to get all questions resolved tonight. We can then hold this over, and he can run through everything and make sure there's nothing amiss, and vote on it at the next meeting. But the last one had to do with the calculation for density of open space that's off-site. The current language that, that we have in front of us is the point-two unit per acre. The staff and planning and zoning recommendation was to simply strike that, which would make it revert back to, like everything else, one unit per acre.
One second, just to be super clear, because it's already here-stricken. Do we have to vote on striking it, or it's already there and you were asking?
We would have to, yes. That is not, that, that was a recommendation from planning and zoning. We have not struck that, at least yet.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So I wanna, I guess I want to be clear in what we're thinking. We're looking at Section 111504, E5E, open space calculations.
Correct.
And what you're proposing, Mr. Marsh, is that the sentence, "Land that is not within the city water sewer contract area shall be calculated at oh-point-two dwelling unit per acre. Additionally, all off-site space shall be naturalized open space." Your motion is specifically striking that section where it starts with land that is not with-
No, I'm, I'm not making any motion at all at this point. Um, can you, uh, yeah, right there, right there. Um, no, I'm, I'm just saying, what is there that is struck out on this draft, we have not struck as a council. It's a, a thing that we have to discuss. That's, that's the recommendation of staff is to strike that, and planning and zoning passed it with that recommendation. We have not, we talked about it, but we haven't, as a council, made any decision on that. And so I'm opening it up for conversation on keeping it, striking it, changing it.
Okay.
Just to be clear, if we're going with what Councilmember Marsh is saying, we would not need a motion. It's already in the current draft.
Strike?
Yeah.
Well, then I've got a question.
All right, so just again, super clear, because that's opposite of what you just said. You said that we need to motion to strike it, and you're saying it's already stricken, we'd need to motion to add it back in. Is that right? Which is right.
The, the, Phil could be right. If, if this just comes through us-
Yeah, it's only stricken in the packet.
-from planning and zoning. Okay, all right, understand.
That's what they did, so you would have to do a motion to put it back in.
Okay, understand, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, now, last one.
Then I would want to go one step further, further, and remove Section 111504E6B, and just remove the density bonuses altogether on this section. And then also do 11504E6B3, remove that section for density bonuses as well. If you're gonna remove it in the open space calculation, you might as well pull it out in the other areas, and then everyone knows what the zoning allows, and what the goal is, is to increase the green space, yet provide a balance of contiguous land use for those new parcels that are developed within the thirty percent allowable designated area. So I would add those two. If you remove those two along with what you've proposed that's already an E here, you've basically got a very clean way of figuring out what you can develop within that thirty percent space.
Clarification, you mentioned B1 and B3.
I'm sorry, I'll go back and say it again. 11504E6B, 11504E6B3.
Wait, B and B3 are two different, are you mean B1, or are you talking about B altogether? Like it's on front of us on the screen?
He's talking about this and this one down here, right?
But B has four subparts.
Yes. Well, I'm reading it off of, uh, when it came out of planning and zoning, I'm sorry. But, um, yes, it would be taking out the one-point-tw- "Growth density shall not exceed one-point-five dwelling units per acre," and then the additional point-ten units per acre, taking those two density bonuses out of the whole section altogether on page seven, and-
Are you suggesting all four clauses in there?
No density bonuses, take them out.
Period.
Period.
So the entire section, B, you don't have to worry about one-
What I'm getting after, Pete, is if you're going to present a land use that's clear and concise, adding those sections in there accomplish what? They accomplish tighter, more compact development. Well, if we truly want a thirty percent developer area and a seventy percent green space area, those should be removed, simply because those add in tighter densities or more development in an area that you want to limit development to thirty percent.
No, it's still thirty percent. It's just a question of, are there a hundred units on it, or a hundred and ten?
Correct. And so my argument is-
It doesn't change the open space.
You don't want to be, have them so tight you can't paint the side, the sides of the houses because they're so close together. So I think at some point, you've, you've diminished the quality of life in an area, or the standard that we want. And those density bonuses do nothing to, I think, accentuate the area or add any value to it.
Well, but hold on a second.
I, I don't know if, you know, I don't know that I would say that no density bonuses is, does that. We just had the Hill Farms with almost seventy percent open space. It was like one, one-point-two or something, and from what I've seen over there, you can paint the siding on the side of the house.
You can.
I think they're selling them pretty quickly.
And there are green spaces across the street.
There's green space integrated in that. Actually, the front area is naturalized green space. There's a big dedication on the back side as well.
But most of their green space is on the other side of the street, right?
The largest amount, but, yeah.
That, that, they'll have to walk a half a mile to get to to enjoy it, because we want to build the green belt. So what I'm saying to you is, we've got to design this in a way that doesn't compromise those developments and those aesthetics within those developments, and that's what I think Dr. Hale's after, and still be able to do the green space, the green belt development, that, that, that outer rim. So I, I don't think it makes much sense to me to have the density bonuses in there. Let's zone it the right way to begin with, and there's no need for those bonuses.
But the density bonuses are intended to encourage additional things. So for example, number one is a density bonus designed- So for example, number one is a density bonus designed to encourage more open space. Density bonus number two is designed for them to go beyond the minimum EPA-required stream restorations. Density bonus three is more vague, but it says for other sustainable design elements, which is basically because we, as a body of seven, can't possibly consider every possible thing that somebody might come up with. So these are density bonuses that are specifically intended to increase the sustainability of the overall site.
And my argument is, is that if you zone it the right way to begin with, you don't need the bonuses. If you set the expectation and the standard as to this is what you bring when you develop in the area, you don't need those.
Well, so...
If I look at this as extra, we've already set the expectation of open space, and this is extra. If you want to restore streams, if you want to provide more open space, this, this brings us extra over the high standards we've already set.
Yeah, that, that's at least, yes, that was the intention of it exactly.
All right, one person at a time. Cynthia? I mean, yeah, Cynthia? Go ahead.
Um, we just had a long discussion about the, the pinwheels and the fourplexes. I have a feeling that we're going to need this if that's something we want to do, possibly out there. Otherwise, that, that's going to be very difficult to achieve. So unless we're going to say no to that duplex or that shared family home, I think we, we need a way to accomplish that with, through the density bonuses.
Like, for example, if everything is not to exceed one and a half dwelling units per acre, okay, so the gross density exceed one and a half dwelling units per acre, how do you do the fourplexes and stuff like that? I mean, you'd have very giant, big ones or something? Or...
That's not happening.
Now, you have more open space.
Oh, I see.
Well, from a conservation standpoint, I'm sure we all understand this, but, you know, if you have a double lot, you can build two single-family homes, or you could build a fourplex. And, you know, potentially have the same amount of green space because you're not having, you know, with the fourplex, you're not having all the space between. It's, gives you more space around it. So we're preventing the sprawl, and it's, from a conservation standpoint, putting things closer together is actually better. And so if we're cutting back on everything for them, you know, the land that's developable, developable, being able to build closer together is, you know, I think it's good to be able to give them a bonus for helping save the stuff that we want to save.
And, and, and the 1.5 itself was intended to put a top line cap, which we have not had previously. So if, for example, Heritage Preserve where I am, I think was a little over 1.6. And so this is, um, th- this is again intended to put a ceiling that we don't currently have on it, is, is what the 1.5 is.
So where do we stand here? You had, you had a proposal to remove those. I kind of feel like since we're not doing multifamily vertical, then I don't know how big of a problem it is to have density bonuses or not have density bonuses. Is there a staff opinion on density bonuses?
I think it would limit single-family home developments as well. For instance, if you look at Hill Farm, it was 69% open space. I think it was, was it 1.3 units per acre, 1.2?
1.1 something.
Okay. I mean, it would make it, it would make it more challenging for even single-family homes if they weren't able to look at some of these density bonuses. But saying that, you could, if there was one, particular ones in here that you didn't want to give density bonuses to, you could look at that as well.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All right, any... Three points, or is that...
So are we leaving that as is? All right, so we still haven't, are we leaving E struck as per the draft?
Basically giving the flexibility to staff and whoever, I mean, at the time to figure it out, essentially, the way it struck out.
So we're leaving that?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And Michelle, you mentioned you had...
I had one additional consideration. So Councilmember Vermillion and I had talked about this last week, was not included in here, but we were talking about stormwater management. And, you know, similar to the Recreation and Wellness Campus, it's, it's a demonstration site. It has a lot of, a variety of different types of stormwater management applications there, best management practices. How do we incorporate that within here as well? So for instance, so you don't get a development that has all detention basins or all underground, but it has a variety of applications. So proposing for, um, under the development standards, if you go to page seven of seven and go to number seven that says wetlands, if you, if we added an eight underneath there and sort of following the same thoughts with the wetlands, it would be titled Stormwater Management. Storm, uh, the Stormwater Management Plan shall comply with all applicable state, federal, and city requirements, and consider a variety of stormwater management best practices.
That would be added as a number eight?
Correct.
Okay. Do we, to vote to add that, or is that already there?
Yeah, we need to vote. So would somebody want to do a motion and then a second?
Moved.
Motioned, a second, anybody?
Second.
And seconded, any comments on that addition?
Can we make them use ADS?
ADS only has a few above-ground applications, so...
Okay, just checking.
All right, so it's hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yep, good idea.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
So my last motion will be, oh, sorry.
No, I didn't know you had another motion. I'm sorry.
It's, it was to, uh, what's the word? Is it hold? Holdover?
Oh, okay. I have another question.
All right, sorry, before I do that.
Well, if they're going to bring it back the next meeting table or postpone.
Yes, so I do have a question on going back up to number four that we were discussing under the bonus density. An additional 0.10 units per acre of the overall gross density may be granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission in its sole discretion for extraordinary costs for regional serving infrastructure. What does that mean exactly?
Well, the Heritage Preserve example was, uh, they had to put in, uh, two roads that were unloaded for houses that are on our thoroughfare plan and a regional, um, multi-use path that runs through their entire development as, because they're regional infrastructure, they were required to put those in. And then in so doing, were, to afford to do those, were granted density bonuses so that they, so they could, so we didn't have to.
So why planning and zoning? I'm just curious.
It says sole discretion, planning and zoning. That's how the, that's how the code was first adopted.
Hmm.
What'd you want to move it to? Council?
What, well, is, is council giving the other bonuses on the other ones? Like at, at which point in the process is this happening?
Well, each of the density bonuses would be the recommendation from the Planning Commission for City Council to adopt or not adopt the ordinance to rezone.
So can number four also be recommendation? As I, it just says...
They could be whatever you want. They could be, they could be in council's sole discretion, or they could be in either Planning Commission or council's discretion or committee. I mean, it's, however you want it to be.
You could remove that language that says it, the sole discretion for three and four, and then it just goes through a normal process where it comes to planning and zoning and then council.
That's exactly what I was thinking. I think that's the probably simplest way.
Okay, that, that's good. So can we move to strike that language then in its sole discretion on number three and four?
Second.
Okay, so then, uh, any comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Cynthia, to be clear, that is in section 6B, three and four?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Okay.
Okay.
Now I'll move to holdover this ordinance for a vote at the October 23 meeting.
Um, can I throw out an idea before we do that? And not trying to open huge cans of worms, but since there's been a lot of talk about, we're not doing vertical, okay, fine. And we're doing all this green space, which all increases the cost of everything. Uh, and I don't think we have to do it right now, but what about the idea of adding density bonuses for, say, first-time homebuyers or something that is targeted towards that young, like in other words, you're going to be, you're going to have some portion of this to be for smaller homes for first-time homebuyer kind of people. And if you don't plan that in at all, I'm worried that you're just going to end up with a whole bunch of expensive step-down homes, which is fine, there's nothing wrong with that. But we're just not going to have an opportunity for those, those kind of people. So just throwing it out as an idea to talk about.
Let me make a suggestion related to that, because kind of on a related note, as I talked to some developers working through this draft, there were other suggestions such as allowing density bonuses for senior living since that's generally less traffic, less, you know, use of city facilities and things like that. My suggestion might be to address questions like that, address questions like the first-time homebuyer thing as part of some other big, you know, look at affordability that we might do, revisiting all of the code rather than making it specific for houses in the Conservation District only.
That, that would do absolutely nothing to bring in affordable housing. It's a very complicated, costly thing to, to do the, you know, true housing affordability. And just giving some density bonuses would do absolutely nothing to, to get that housing to first-time homebuyers.
Well, I would disagree. I mean, there's, there's, there's a reason why they're doing microhomes all over the country for people that they can't afford big houses, so they afford smaller ones, but it's more density. But it's a different thing. And I'm just, if, if we want to talk about this down the road, because everything we've done up now is make things that are very, affordable to a certain class of people, let's put it that way. And that's, you know, so we can revisit down the road if you'd like.
Yeah, I think we've mostly been focused on sustainability-related issues here in the Conservation District. Um, I think all of those things are good things to look at and talk about, but maybe they're part of a, a separate big picture conversation is...
Okay.
My thought.
If it was a separate big picture, would it be applicable to the, this area as well?
I mean, when we talk about that, we could, I mean, I'm not saying it definitely would or wouldn't, but, um, that could all be part of that conversation.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so nothing further? Do you want a motion to table?
All right, I'm making a motion to postpone to the October 23 meeting.
Second.
Second.
Third. All right, um, roll call, please.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
All right, so we now will move on to the next item. We have one first reading tonight. Will the clerk please read 23-18 by title only?
Authorizing the appropriation and expenditure of funds to purchase vehicles for HPD.
Some more Mercedes?
Um, is there, first of all, is there a member who'd like to sponsor and, and adopt?
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Um, does, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. Uh, this legislation is to approve the purchase of two Ford Explorer Police Package vehicles for the HPD fleet. Um, we've identified vehicles that will be traded in and/or sold, so they are replacement vehicles. Uh, as noted in the packet, Ford is not making the vehicles available for purchase in 2024. They are only filling orders that they have already received. So we had already purchased our vehicles in 2023. Our planned purchases for 2024 are going to be canceled. Uh, we were fortunate to find these two vehicles, so it'll reduce the impact down on our fleet overall. Any other questions? I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, ordinance 23-18, second reading, uh, will be held at the next meeting of council on October 23, 2023. Resolutions. Will the clerk please read 23-R-82 by title only?
Authorizing a conditional use for outdoor storage accessories to a permitted principal use exceeding 10% of the total lot area of, or parcel at 3670 Lacon Road within the M1 Restricted Industrial District.
Is there a council member who'd like to sponsor and adopt?
It's removed.
Motioned?
Second.
Second? I didn't hear a second.
Mr. Marsh?
Second.
All right, uh, go ahead. Staff report?
Good evening, members of council. So this outdoor storage area is a conditional use in the M1 District. The Planning Commission approved, uh, or forwarded a positive recommendation to council concerning this. This site was a subject of a conditional use for outdoor storage. Oh, I forget what year that was, 2006, 2005. And the approval was for about 35% of the area to be outdoor storage. This property swapped some land, and so got some additional land that they are now wanting to use for outdoor storage. If you go to the site plan...
Got the thing, John.
Oh. There we go. So, yeah, outlined in, in purple there is the, is the site. And you can see that a good portion of that site is used for outdoor storage. Go to this, this is the plan that got approved. So the yellow and green portion there, the green is, uh, an existing landscape area with mounding. It's a really good screen, uh, from the residential properties to the south. Even had some neighbors come to the Planning Commission meeting and mention that even during the wintertime, it's a good screen, and they don't see, uh, the outdoor storage. The yellow portion is the, the new outdoor storage area. There's a requirement to have that drive lane through it so that there's vehicular access into and out of that space. Additionally, there's a requirement up in that, um, hatched area, the upper right, uh, a drive lane has to be in there. That was a previously approved outdoor storage area. And then the two areas where you can see that in the white that say open concrete, those were the, uh, also part of the previously approved outdoor storage areas. So with this new area, the percentage, the area covered by outdoor storage for this overall lot is 37.8%. The requirement is to be of a dust-free gravel surface for those outdoor storage areas, and they cannot be used for vehicle parking. There's, and the minimum landscape buffer there on the south end has to be maintained. Uh, that's essentially the details on this one. Do you have questions about that? Planning Commission recommended approval, uh, to council on that unanimously.
All right, any questions?
I, I have a question. So the letter that, that is, was in the packet or was in the planning and zoning from Kyle and Rose Reed, excuse me, um, it talks about not, not a problem with the, um, the company that we're talking about, but... with the, the company that we're talking about, but that their next door, that the company next door makes a lot of dust and dirt clouds that float over to their property. Is there something we can be doing about that for them?
Yeah, so the prop, the property, the adjacent property to the east of this site is the subject of a, of a conditional use for outdoor storage. It'll be coming through planning commission, eventually coming to council as well. And that property to the east was one where we've been working with them to clean up the site, and they've done a lot of it, but there was some tree removal. On the south end, there is a stream or ditch that runs through there, and some of the invasives were taken out of there, and some additional trees were cut down, and we're gonna be working with them on restoring a buffer there, but that'll come through that process. We are, we've been working with them for a few months on getting cleanup, and now getting them to have a clear plan, similar to this one that shows, what's the area of outdoor storage, and then how's that surface gonna be treated, so we hope that'll be coming through soon.
Okay, and then do these people, the neighbors, under, do they know that that's gonna happen?
Yeah, so we've talked to them, and they're, they got noticed, and told them they will get notices on the, on the other one as well.
Okay, thank you.
John, I had a question. Sorry. So, the, the yellow portion, do we know that the new storage materials will also be shielded by the current plantings?
Yes, 'cause, yeah, they, they do a lot of concrete and excavation work, so, yeah, they have to, they'll be below that. It's similar to, go back to the- See, it's, it's, you can see the, the area in the purple there, down closer to where the Darby-Glen subdivision wards are.
Oh.
It's stuff that is just, they have on the ground, a lot of concrete and pipe and that kind of stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, comments? All right, so then, where was I? Will the clerk please call the roll on 23-R-82?
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Will the clerk please read 23-R-83 by title only?
Appointing members to the Board of Trustees of the Hilliard Community Authority.
Is there a council member who'd like to sponsor and adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Staff report?
Good evening, members of council. This legislation appoints two additional members to the Hilliard Community Authority to finish out terms from two resignations. This community authority captures both Charlton Meadows and Carr Farms, but then also the True Point Development, and it's, the recommendation is for Angela Zodi and Letty Shamp, who are both extremely excited to be.
Okay, any questions, comments, or-
I've got one.
-jokes, or what, yes?
Is there any chance we might wanna consider having some of those that don't get chose, chosen for the P and Z spots to be chosen for these terms? A lot of people have wanted to, applied, and I think, you know, it'd be good experience to get on that community authority.
What does it mean, like, once a year?
Yes.
Not, it's not that much exposure then?
So, for the moment, though, the recommendation, are we, any other comments? All right, so then, roll call please.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Will the clerk please read 23-R-84 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement, PSA, with Burgess and April Incorporated to provide general engineering services and authorizing an expenditure.
Is there a council member who'd like to sponsor and adopt?
Still moved.
Motioned and seconded.
Good evening, members of city council. This is an annual professional services contract related to roundabouts. It may be extended annually, subject to the appropriation of funds by city council. This piece of legislation also authorizes an expenditure for year one of this contract in the amount of $99,200. This is to prepare plans, specifications, and contract documents for the modification of the Britton and Davidson Roundabout that we discussed at the last meeting during Committee of the Whole in our budget discussion, but there is an exhibit in page 53 of your packet that kind of describes what we're proposing to do as part of that project. So, I'm happy to answer any further questions on this piece of legislation.
We get more roundabouts if we vote for this? No?
This is just mostly to modify existing roundabouts, that sort of thing.
Go ahead.
It's not a design contract.
Anybody else?
Are they still kind of the only game in town? Oh, no, absolutely not. There are many folks that, many firms that design roundabouts these days. We've used them recently for some of these modifications, because I think they've done a really good job for us in terms of evaluation, applying for grants, refining our raised crosswalk specifications, and sometimes utilizing someone in small, these small annual GES contracts is an effective use of city dollars, because we don't have to retrain a new consultant for these types of tasks. Thank you.
Okay, anything further? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the roll on 23-R-84?
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
That's passed. We now move on, city manager updates.
One update. So, at your next council meeting, we will have a first reading of both the CIP and the 2024 operating budget. We'll also have a workshop session on operating budget prior to the meeting, regular meeting, and, but you'll receive the operating budget later in the week. It'll also be in your packet, but there's a charter requirement that we have that to council prior to October 15th, so we'll send it out, all of it out ahead of time, but you'll also see it in your packet.
Thank you very much. Items for council discussion, one very minor item, if we can get some kind of plastic, something or other to cover the wire so people don't trip. I know, it, I keep thinking about it, and we keep almost having trips. Go ahead. Anybody else?
I've got one.
Well, first of all, I know you've got a few things. Anything, anything, anything? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I got this email from, I believe it was City Manager Crandall, and it was written by Dan Rowley, but it was addressed to the City Council of Hilliard. So, it appears that Dan wrote back to a constituent that they had a, Beau Rye had a question about the Hilliard Comprehensive Plan, the final plan, and Mr. Rowley took it upon himself to answer the question, but my concern is a couple. My first question is, how come city council, it was addressed to council, but council never got notice of the email? Can someone help me understand how that's happening?
If requests, inquiries come into the general council email, then we, we try and respond to those that are looking for responses, so that's where that came from, and then I forwarded it on to council so you could see the response and the original inquiry.
So, Ms. Crandall, just to be clear, that email is addressed to council members, not city staff?
Correct, and we've discussed this previously, so if there's questions that come into council's general mailbox, then we try and respond to those. They're looking for, you know, answers to questions that they may have, so we've centralized those responses. So, depending on what it is, I'll try and figure out who the most appropriate staff member is to respond to that, so we can respond to that resident in a, in a timely fashion. Sometimes it's not a question, it's not a question they're sending along, it's just their views on something that typically gets immediately forwarded on to council.
So, my question is, is why aren't they all being forwarded on? As you're aware, we're having a really good conversation in the community about this Hilliard Comprehensive Plan, yet we don't get notice of the question coming from a constituent-
You did.
But you've take, I didn't get notice until after you've already responded, and what's inappropriate about that, and how inappropriate that is?
I, I would point out, it was a question about legislation that was passed by this council, five to two. It wasn't a question about something that was upcoming to the council, it's something that was already approved by this council.
And addressed to council, Mr. Teeter. That's my point.
But it was still a city policy since it had been passed.
Just one at a time.
So, so if we're going to have an email address that is a council email address, then council should be notified timely of those inquiries. To get the notification after Mr. Rowley has already commented on it and wrote a four, five paragraph response, I think is totally inappropriate.
I have no issue with it.
Sir, I think your issue must be then with me, because those emails come into me, and then they're forwarded per our conversation before, which is what I thought was supposed to happen. So, for lack of a better word, there is no procedure unless this body of seven wants to create one-
Correct.
-that states this is how it goes, because right now, I'm the pickle in the middle, right? So, it has to be something that, that can be clearly defined, instead of council's gonna get something on trash pickup, or whatever, and, and not have staff, from where I stand, from the clerk's point of view, I have never, ever had a council of seven get one email, because what happens is then one could answer, and the other one could answer, and they could all be difference of opinions, and then nobody sees, sees anybody, and then then what kind of message is that? So, I mean, where I've been from, it's always been one message. It usually went to the city manager, and the city manager answers stuff on city staff things, because you hired her to do administrative, to handle the city day-to-day business.
So, Dee, I have no problem with that.
I know.
But what I do have a problem with is a constituent sending a note in, thinking they're communicating with this body-
Correct.
-and they're not.
Correct.
And then, and then what we get is, is we get, well, this is just a concept, it's not a plan, which I can get into a lot about that-
Correct.
-and, and we can go down that rabbit hole. It's a heck of a lot more than a concept. I find this incredibly, incredibly condescending and misleading. So, I don't want this person to think that this stuff is coming from me as a council member, or this body, when it's not, and it's coming from Ms. Crandall and her group on what this plan's about. So, we've gotta come up with a way where someone does an inquiry that we get also notice of what the inquiry is. Now, we can agree that, okay, the inquiry comes in, gives staff time to look at it, staff can CC us on the response. Maybe that's what we do, but not getting the inquiry at all is unacceptable to me. If you're not going to do that, then, if you're not gonna show me that amount of respect, then get rid of the email address, because people are thinking they're contacting this body, and they are not.
Sir, I think there's a couple of things that you could do. I think as far as a general council email address, you could always put it on the website that this general council email address goes to the clerk of council, and if you want to answer or respond to a council member, your emails are there too.
Exactly.
I mean, so I think it's something, I think it's something simple like that, and then anything that comes in that general council email address then gets handled the way it's handled, and then if, if a constituent wants to hand, and we can make it very clear-
Right.
-that if they want to get ahold of this body, or individuals on this body, to reference your email address, because it's in there anyways. So, I think that's the answer, or the roundabout way, instead of being the pickle in the middle, or if this body wants to vote on a concept or procedure, then, then let's do it.
I agree, but I, what I, what I can't have is some constituent thinking they're reaching out to us and it not getting to us.
Sir, I totally understand that, and it was, and I, and I hadn't-
Didn't go to me until after it was done with the city manager.
Which was fine, because it was about a policy we had already passed.
That's your opinion, Mr. Teeter. That's not mine.
No, that was a five to two vote. That's not an opinion. That was a five to two vote by a member, by legislation that was in front of this council. Therefore, becomes city policy, city staff can answer that.
Then don't have a council email, because the question was about city policy, address to council members. That is extremely lazy, because what you're saying is, what you're saying is, Andy, is what you're saying is, hey, we've already passed this legislation. I don't have time to respond to that, give that-
That is not what I'm saying.
That's what it's, the outcome is.
No, it is not.
Sure it is, because that's what happened.
No.
I would have preferred-
Like Dee says, we, we shouldn't be answering that with seven different emails. It needs to be one answer.
Then you shouldn't have an email address-
And since it's already passed, the staff should be able to answer that.
And no one's saying staff can't answer it. Don't get me wrong.
I think that's what you said.
No, I didn't. I just said if it's being addressed to us, we get notice of it, and we have the ability to respond to it. That's what I'm saying, and that is not happening when it goes to the staff first. They filter it through. How many have come into staff that haven't come to this body? Does anyone care?
You are getting notice of it, because when we, we send the response to all of council, it has the original email from that resident, so it gives you the opportunity, if you'd like to respond separately to that resident, you have their email address and their original in-
So, all-
So, you are, so you are getting notice of it, it's just giving us a chance to provide a professional response that's one response representing the city, city council.
So, are we getting all the email inquiries, Ms. Crandall?
I, I believe you are.
We're getting them, it's just after you've done your work on them.
If there's something that requires response, then we're sending it to the appropriate staff member to respond, then we're forwarding that on to council. Sometimes it's just an opinion, those are going directly to council where there's not a question necessarily-
So, they're all coming through to us at some point in time?
Correct.
Ask a question, just so that it's super clear. Highlight the timeframe, we're talking about 15 hours from when it came in to when it came to us. The email was sent on the 26th, and we got it on, at night, and we got it on the 27th, so it wasn't a long, you know, it wasn't a hidden process.
But my point is, is that if we're going to have it addressed to us, it needs to come to us.
All right, so here's a question, just procedurally, is it a completely separate email account? Is that how it's, what is set up technically right now?
On, on the website, there is a general council email-
Right.
-that comes to me.
And-
Can it be construed that it's coming to council? I, I don't know, because that's what we're typically used to, but I mean, I think the answer is to clarify on the website that that general email account comes to the clerk of council, and if you would like to get ahold of council-
I think that works.
-then you can do it, because what happens is, and this has happened, there was something that came in, it was forwarded to council, there was a council member or two that responded, and no one got CC'd on it, so no one knew what the answer was, and I only got CC'd on it, because the guy that originally requested it sent it back into the general council email. So, I think that's where the disconnect, or the, 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 and I meant no disrespect, Mr. Carrier. But that's, but that's where the disconnect is, and I think you think that there's this, hundreds of emails that come in, and there's not. We're talking maybe one, one a week, maybe two, tops?
So, why do we even have the inbox?
I think it's for convenience for the residents in case they have a question about, to be quite honest, cat feces, trash pick up-
Oh, yeah, there's all kinds of stuff.
That, that kind of stuff, the little things that, you know, when someone's in a panic about something that's bothering them, they wanna click, and they wanna click now, and, and that seems like the easiest way to go. A lot of the things that come in aren't necessarily, I think, you know, oh my gosh, seven members of council have to address it, because they just wanna answer as to when's, what can be done to fix it. But I mean, we're not talking hundreds of emails.
Fine, regardless of number, but don't you have your own email address on the website? Isn't there like an email address for the clerk as well?
There is, but there, that's just for clerk of council stuff, so it doesn't come addressed to me. It comes into, I think, city council general, or whatever that email address is. It has been established way, way before I got here, and I think that's the process that's always happened, and it seems like it's changed two, three times, and I mean, whatever you seven want it to happen is what will happen.
I, I support the solution that Dee gave, the very simple solution. Do we need to take a vote on that, or anything? To amend the website, to just clarify that those emails go to the clerk, and-
Well, I think we, we have to make sure that that can happen as far as David Ball goes, but I mean, I think that's the simplest solution, if you're, if the confusion with the residents is that it's coming to all seven members of council.
So, do we give a directive to Mr. Ball to proceed with that change? What do we do?
I don't know.
I, I think right now they get a response that it has been received and will be forwarded to all of council. We can put a disclaimer near where that mailbox is on the website.
So, we're telling them it's coming to council, and it is, but it's after it's been through staff?
No, sir. I send them an email and say, thank you for your email.
Okay.
This has been forwarded, is basically what I say.
Here comes the tech.
Did you come here for this, or by accident?
You just walked into the Brian Bear.
There is a general email set up for all departments, and that is for a security reason. So if we publish individual emails, council accepted, there is a regular occurrence throughout the industry of bots taking over those emails. So we could shut council one, council down@hilliardohio.gov, immediately publish council one@hilliardohio.gov, and the public can still communicate with us. If that is elcarrier@hilliardohio.gov, that's a lot harder. Like, it's a little bit more difficult because you're an individual and it ties to you. So that's why we try to set those up to forward, so we can keep that communication open. So just wanted to point that out.
So there's a security reason we do that email?
That was, that was my.
Okay.
So if you go to our website, records clerk is not the clerk's actual identified email that internally we use. It's clerk of council, I don't remember, clerk of council@hilliardohio.gov.
I think you've noticed that on some of our vacancy notices, not to Dee Warbrick@hilliardohio.gov, you know, whatever, it's to council clerk one. It's not my email address anymore. It comes into a generic email address.
And we just forward that to her actual. So that structure's set up, that's a best practice that we try to put across, that tries to alleviate issues with individuals' emails, and we can keep that communication open.
So does everything get solved if there's just a little comment on the website that says this goes to clerk and will be forwarded to council if appropriate, something like that?
Me, I just want to make sure that they might not get you.
All right, that clarifies that. Is there anything else?
Well, the only other thing I had is I did read Mr. Rowley's response, and I found it, it tickled me where he said the community plan is only a concept. Now, what you didn't tell this resident, Mr. Rowley, was that you all have been studying Old Hilliard and the Old Hilliard Sewer and Water Services through utility study. And that utility study was done and set and scheduled last year. Then Ms. Crandall was kind enough to finally forward me the copy, which showed that you were already using this concept that you referenced, Mr. Rowley, as data for population growth in the future to plan for the utilities in Old Hilliard. So I find it a little, I'm going to use a word that I've heard a lot of, disingenuous, that we're calling it a concept, when in all reality, you've already started planning the utility study to allow for greater density and growth and development in Old Hilliard, to include development along the trail, that the community plan says will be three, four, and five stories high. So I want to make it clear that we're not talking about a concept, folks. Active planning within staff has already been budgeted and going forward on planning and utility needs for additional density in Old Hilliard. That's out there. That's in this Burgess and Nyepel report. I don't know what the difference between the red line version and the final version is, but they have it, and in section 3.1, they reference the Hilliard Comprehensive Plan as a basis for planning future development and need within that area, and oversizing and redoing all the pipes and utilities. So I just get a little frustrated when I see us talking in terms of, it's disingenuous to say that when the zoning's approved, that these changes may or may not occur, it still comes back to council. Because the council process you saw tonight is the zoning is approved or will be approved, and then it's basically, for the most part, conditional uses. So to say it's just a concept is, to me, very, very disingenuous. And I will tell you, a plan is so much more than a concept. We've already started studying the way to implement the plan, and we've already put aside money and incorporated it within the versions of what we have here as drafts for the Old Hilliard Utility Study. Now, what I thought was really interesting was, is Ms. Crandall wanted to wait until November to give me that draft, and I had to request it through public records request. That, folks, is a sad state of affairs. When an elected official asks on the floor, a professional presenting to this body, hey, can you send me a copy of the study, and you wanted to delay it until after the election cycle. So I'm not sure what disingenuous is, but I'm pretty darn sure we're in the realm of that right now. So I've been very forthright and frank. I am not happy with the fact that we were trying to delay this information. I had to force it to come out, to show what the utility study was. No, Mr. Rowley, it is not a concept. It is way, way more than a concept. It's a plan, and it's already been started.
Go ahead, Mr. Marsh.
Three points. First, I did check out your campaign website again today, and the map that is on there says, at the top of it, concept plan. The same thing it says in the comprehensive plan. And there is even, on those pages with the maps, the word concept used multiple times in describing what the illustration is, the Old Hilliard Concept Plan illustrates, and so on. Says concept repeatedly. Second point, there used to be a time where council members complained about the city not preparing well for the future. We've got a staff that is looking at this comprehensive plan and trying to address things ahead of time, whether it's infrastructure, roads, water, sewer. They're trying to look at growth that could be or is coming, probably is coming, because it's not going to be stopped. I think that's something that should be commended, not trashed. You know, at our last meeting, there were several questions about, when it came to, I think it was the Old Hilliard water line, you know, oh, is this because it's old, or is this because it's to support future growth? I suspect what the hope was, was to say it's for future growth so that it could be used for campaign purposes. But even if that was the answer, that would be great. Staff should be planning for future use, so that we aren't coming back in five years and saying, oh, we didn't size it properly. That should be how we look at everything. That should be how we look at roads, and we're doing it now. We should thank them for doing that. And then just the last point, the sewer study that you're referencing is in draft format. It hasn't been reviewed by our staff. I am not an expert at those things. That's not a useful document to me in this stage without our experts providing the information. So I wouldn't expect to be getting that until it was in some format that I could use. So I think we need to be very clear that it wasn't a hiding of a document, it was insisting on receiving a draft that hasn't been vetted and prepared for us.
So Councilman Marsh, so let me ask you this. How does Burgess and Nyepel make a draft? Where do they get the information from to do this study? Does that just come out of thin air, or does the staff give them the information to provide them the input to create the draft that they recommended for the size of the water lines and the sewer lines?
Yeah, of course they provide the base information.
So it comes from staff.
But that doesn't, yeah, the information has to come from somewhere, but.
And so it came from staff long before the study was actually sent back by Burgess and Nyepel in February of this year. By the way, February of this year, before the study was voted on by this body. And they've got it referenced in the material as gospel.
When you negotiate something and provide information to either an opposing side or to your own client, and they send something back, do you just take it and be done with it there, because, well, I provided the information, it must be done? Or do you run through it and make additional suggestions, or say, oh, I think you misinterpreted that, or you haven't foreseen this thing?
But my point is, you were using the data from the concept that we're talking about, that they referenced to staff, that's really a plan. They're using it to make design decisions about the future of an area. Now, let's get back to the website, savehilliard.com. You went and looked at it, I'm glad. It's been getting a lot of hits. And you know why it's getting a lot of hits? Because there's a lot of pink, purple, and brown on there. And you know what all those represent?
Concept plans.
Three, four, and five story highs.
It represents.
A concept, of course. A concept which we're planning for through sewer and water utility studies, that includes oversized lines to bring water and sewer to everybody, so that we can pump them in there and put them right next to the walking path, and to run it all the way to Leap Road.
If we have to replace water lines, how foolish would it be to not plan for eventual future growth in the city of Hilliard?
That you just mentioned it.
How foolish would that be?
Yeah.
Would it be foolish, or would it be wise, to not plan for future growth?
And you know what?
Would it be foolish or wise to not plan for future growth?
I do not disagree with that. I disagree with what is being planned. That is the crux of what this whole thing is about. What you've got on there is super high-density assumptions. Yes, you do. You've got three, four, five, and six-story streetscapes. That's what's on those colors. That's what it says in the document. You all want to make it a concept.
It is a concept.
It's not a concept. It's way down the road of a concept.
It's a concept. Many of those are the same as the 2011 comp plan. Several of those are less dense from a residential standpoint than the 2011 comp plan.
So because they were in 2011, it's okay that they're in it now?
I'm saying that if those were your concerns, this is an improvement over what you've apparently been just fine with throughout your entire career on council.
I didn't pass the first complaint.
Because you've never brought it up before.
I didn't pass the first complaint.
You've never brought up any concerns with the previous comprehensive plan.
Oh, I think I did. I ran pretty hard on no apartments, something that you've just flipped on. So let's be clear.
That's false, and even the.
Oh, and it's absolutely true. The video's pretty clear.
Even the video that was put on there, I very clearly.
All right, guys, guys, one at a time. I'm just trying to be referee on time.
I was very clear.
Okay.
So you can say whatever you want about concepts, Mr. Marsh, but the real concept here is you guys pushed heavy density that this community does not want.
All right.
This council hasn't approved any apartment that you haven't also approved.
Okay, so is there a motion to end discussion for tonight?
No move.
Okay, so motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Roll call to, okay, so I would entertain a motion and second to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, no move.
Motioned and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.